How is that, Connie? All right. I'd like to call a meeting to order. This is the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting for August 21st, 2018. It's now 7:00 PM and time to start our meeting, so it is hereby called to order. As we always do on these meetings, I'd like you all to rise and please stand with me, place your hand over your heart, and we'll pay our respects to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Mr. Secretary, to start us off this evening, would you be kind to call the roll, please?
Johnson?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Deeg?
Here.
Bama?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Helma?
Here.
Hyatt?
Here.
We're all here.
How about that? We got a full house. Leslie, welcome aboard, buddy. It's good to have you here.
Did she bring the doughnuts?
I think she did, and I appreciate that. And I'm gonna, I'll get one at some point. All right. So, good. Everybody's here, and the band's all here, so that's good. All right. Starting off then, next is the approval of the agenda. We have before us an agenda for this evening that involves a public hearing and a couple of old businesses. If I could have a motion to approve this agenda, or any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the Village of Oxford regular planning commission meeting for Tuesday, August 24th, 2018.
Twenty-first.
What did I say?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-first.
Thank you.
Support.
All right. Mr. Secretary, I have a motion on the table to approve these agendas, and a support from Commissioner Helma. Have you, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Our agenda for this evening is approved. Next, I would like to look at the minutes from our last meeting, which was held July 17th of this year, 2018. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
If there are no changes, I'd like to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 17th, 2018.
Support.
All right. Mr. Secretary, once again, I have a motion on the table, and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from our previous meeting without any changes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. We have approved minutes. Thank you very much. Those will be filed appropriately. Mr. Secretary, in this gigantic packet of information we have, is there any correspondence for us to pay attention to?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll skip over number six, as there's no correspondence. Item number seven on our agenda this evening is for us to enter a public hearing to hear public comment on the zoning ordinance amendment regarding the number of zoning board of appeals members. And this comment will be strictly held to that category. I'd have a motion to enter a public hearing, please, at five minutes after seven.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:03 PM.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Mr. Secretary, we are now in, I should take a vote on that, don't you think?
Once or twice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Good. We are now in public hearing. At this point, I open this council, or this commission meeting up to hearing from any members of the public who would like to give us testimony or comment on the zoning ordinance amendment, or proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding the number of zoning board of appeals Mr. Village manager, did you want to talk about that tonight?
No, I'm good. I can trace well down.
Good. Thank you very much. Connie, did you have anything you'd like to add? I'm just checking. Madam President? All right. It appears we have no public comment or testimony to be offered at tonight's public hearing, so I would then entertain a motion to exit public hearing.
I'll make a motion at 7:04 to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right. I have a motion on the table, Mr. Secretary, and support. All those in favor of exiting public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Our public hearing is closed. Now, on to item eight, which is old business. Under that category, we have consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment regarding the number of zoning board of appeals members. Mario, I believe you have some report to give us in that regard, and I'd be happy to hear what you have to say, and if you make sure to speak into your microphone. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening. We're here tonight to consider in front of you a amendment to the ZBA zoning ordinance. Basically, your current zoning ordinance states that specifically that the ZBA shall be, consist of six members. As we all know, and as you intimately know, being a volunteer does take up a significant amount of time. So, with the number of boards that a community faces, sometimes it's necessary to alter that number. And so, what you have in front of you is a proposal to amend the language so that it's not as rigid. It doesn't specifically state one way or another, a definitive number. It states a number that would be in keeping with the zoning enabling act. So, these amendments are in keeping with the legislative, excuse me, with the statutory power given to the village under the zoning enabling act. And basically, what it would be is, rather than having six members, it gives the council, which has, which is the body that appoints the numbers of the members to the ZBA, that the ZBA should consist of no less than three, no more than seven members. This is, this is, once again, it's just very, very practical, because it keep in line with the state statute, but it allows the council, if they so choose, and if there's a wealth of applications, they could increase at any point in time the number of people. Some key points that we did include in this proposed amendment is the idea that, all right, we can have the numbers changed, but we would limit the amount of time. So, it wouldn't happen during the middle of an application. For example, if someone submitted an application for variance, or something to the ZBA, the number of the board members that it consider it could only be changed after that. So, when they're not, they're not in the middle of considering a, an application. And also, that, they would also not alter the number of members on the ZBA to less than those that are currently filled. For example, if you had a seven, if you had the time, say it went up to seven members, you had five active, the council could not lower that to three, or to four. So, those five individuals that are currently appointed and are serving the community would be able to fill out their term. So, that's another significant change, is a mi, well, it's a change. And then, in addition, the council does have the authority to remove people. One other housekeeping thing we thought we'd like to clean up is, they still obviously have that authority, but it would be more definitive. We would have language that recommends that the council may remove someone for cause after consideration of written charges of misconduct relevant to the responsibilities of the ZBA. So, this is just, once again, something that says that they would have to definitively state a specific reason as to why a person was not capable of fulfilling their duties as ZBA. So, that's the proposal in front of you, and I think it's gonna allow the community to be more fluid in how the ZBA works, and I'll take any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Mario. Go ahead.
Our attorney is recommending five members. If we go to five members, what would the makeup be of? I know right now, one is from the planning commission, one is from?
One is from council.
Council.
And then, the rest would be at-large members. So, for example, if you, if at some point in time it went down to three, you'd still have one from the planning commission, one from council, and one at-large members. So, those variable members that would come from the community at large.
So, if we go to, say we go to three to seven members, up to seven members, we could have five, but we can go up to?
Correct.
Without having to go through the hearing and everything else again?
Without having to go through this process. The council would still have to adopt a resolution changing the state, the number of members on the ZBA, and then appointing someone, but it wouldn't require a public hearing, it wouldn't require changing the current zoning language.
But council could say we could go five, though, and not, and not a problem.
Yes.
What do you think of that?
Mario, for my edification, if you'd be so kind, please, step me, step me through this amendment process. From our action right now to going forward, what exactly are we doing, and what are the expectations going forward?
So, in the end, you will, you are a recommending body.
Right.
When it comes to this. So, you would be making a recommendation to the council to approve the proposed amendment. And then, at that point in time, the council would take up the matter. It would be read into the record twice, and then, after those two readings, they would have the opportunity to approve or deny the proposed amendment. At that point in time, during one of those two readings, if any of the members, or if the council made action, they could, in theory, kick it back to you to consider changes to that language. But in the end, the council is the one that makes the, is the legislative authority of the village. So, they would be the ones, based on your recommendation, acting on it. And then, after, after it's acted upon, say they do approve it, then it gets published in the paper, and then after a certain number of days, it becomes official.
So, the expectation here from us, then, is that we would create a motion that would potentially make a recommendation to the village council that changes be made to the existing ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Jack, please.
The two changes, correct. The change in the number, and also the change in the wording that should slightly be altered, that states that appointed members may be removed for cause?
That's correct.
And what would happen, excuse me, a point, if you wanted that, additional point of clarification, after you make this recommendation, the language you propose would be forwarded to the attorney. The attorney would make up a resolution that would be, that would be considered by council, and it would do the strike-throughs of existing language, it would show officially the new language. But it's exactly as you, it would be exactly as you see in terms of what language is being considered.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mo, please.
For no one to necessarily answer, but think about. Does anyone else think that three is a very low number, when one is a council member and one is a planning commissioner? And there's only three?
Yes.
I think three's a ver, that's, I said, you didn't have to answer. I personally think three's a very low number when we're putting two seats, we're setting two seats aside.
Rose, please.
I'm leaning more towards five members, because I think if we, if we stretch it to seven, at one point, if there's an issue up, can council at that point, like, I don't know, I don't understand, stack the ZBA to?
Well, that's.
So, we should, I feel we should pick one number and be done with it, and then have two alternates.
Well, that's one alternative. In order to allay that concern of possibility of stacking the board, that's why the language specifically states that the number of board members cannot be changed when an application is being considered. So, for example, if, if someone submitted an application, and they say, oh, hold on a minute, I know you guys are, you know, I have the feeling you're going to deny my application, that person could not run to council and try and do that. Not that anybody would, but you never know, so.
Hey, hold your application off. Let me put two more people on the ZBA, then put your application in. I personally would just prefer to have a number and be done, and I like five. I don't like three, I don't like seven. Adam?
Just for clarification, what's the current requirement for, based on our population right now?
The only requirement based on population is that it can't be less than three. Because you are a community of less than 5,000 residents, you can have as few as three. There, so that's the only quantifiable requirement by the statute. And just another point of clarification, I do understand your trepidation with that number, because it is low, but there are cases in which the ZBA could hear a case, and three members would be deciding. For example, the, the, the ZBA, because it's a quasi-judicial body, is not simply, their decisions aren't simply based on a majority of those present. So, for example, if you, if you had a five-member body, and only three were present to hear, to hear a case, it would take all three of those members to vote in the affirmative, to vote, well, as you know, because, because it's a, it's a majority of the number of the body, not, it's not necessarily a number of, the majority of those present. So, two people couldn't approve it, all three.
If there were three, two people could approve it.
If there were three, that is true. Two people could approve it.
That's not what I heard you say, Mario.
Oh, well, that's in the case of five.
I mean, I heard, I heard what you said, but what you, the last portion did not agree with the first portion. I thought you said that a majority of the members, not present, but the members, had to vote in affirmative. So, if you had only three people present, all three would have to vote in the affirmative.
When the.
And two could not carry it, because it, two is, although two is the majority of those present, two is not a majority of the full.
Correct. And that's when, that's when the composition of the board is five members.
Right.
If the composition of the board is three members.
Right. Then two could, yes, I get that.
So, that's what she.
Okay. I see. Okay, I understand now.
Kinda mixed, I jumped around from the.
Leslie has a question.
It is, it is.
Leslie, please, go ahead.
Mario, can you think of any scenario in which a three-member board is an advantage that hasn't already been mentioned?
An advan, I mean, the only advantage really would be that if there's a dearth of applications, and you just can't form, for example, a five-member body, and if you can't get three members there all the time, then, then an application in front of some, someone trying to have an application heard, they would consistently not be able to have their hearing, because they couldn't meet a quorum. So, that's the main reason that we alter the, that if we need to, we fluctuate and have a smaller body. Because if, if someone, you know, applies, they, they meet our deadline requirements, everything is published in the paper, you know, they pay the fees, and then, they show up that evening for a meeting, and they can't even get three people there, then, on a five-member body, then they have to wait a whole other month to do that. Or, the board, the village has to go through the process of scheduling a public hearing. So, it allows the, it gives the highest number of opportunity, higher percentage of opportunity that there would be enough people to at least have this case being heard. You are right, they are, you know, if it was, for some reason, a three-member body, and you only need two people to be there, and the two people have to vote for it, it is, it is not a, not a risk, but it's, it's just what, it's just the circumstances that an applicant would have to face. But, the opportunity, the possibility that he wouldn't have to wait another 30 days, or 60 days, or however long, just to get three people there.
And so, Mario, our current, current zoning ordinance says that there shall be six members, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and Rose, how many members do we have active right now?
Four.
So, that means, in that case, all four members not only have to be there, but they all have to vote in the affirmative, in order for someone to get a variance.
But we have, we are in the process of.
You had five up until two months ago, right?
Right.
Correct.
We had five people.
We actually have seven.
And one of them just dropped out, so we have four active members, but we are recruiting four additional ZBA members.
Okay. Thank you. Jack, go ahead, please.
I know on the township board, sometimes the vote to approve has to be a supermajority. Is the ZBA held any of those rules at any time?
I don't, I'm not familiar, it depends on how they define.
Majority is four out of seven.
Majority is four.
And then you have some.
Yes.
Then you have a supermajority vote, where they have to have at least five out of seven. And that is, in the zoning enabling act, makes you conscious that everybody is aware that you are doing this.
Right.
And I, I don't know what law it falls under, I know it's, it's scratching in the back of my head, because we had it, and we had to have a supermajority. I don't know if it goes down into the ZBA.
It could be, I'm not familiar specifically with that, but it could be a member, your bylaws might.
I think it's just the board.
Yeah.
It's called for two-thirds, too, so give it, or three's not enough.
Right. See, and that makes it clear when you have a controversial topic, where somebody may be partial to a developer or an ordinance change.
Yeah. It's, it's, in the, in the case of the ZBA, it's always the same. Majority of the members of the composition of the board. So, if it's five, you need three. If it's seven, you would need four members there. And if it's three, then you would need two.
When would they make it seven?
I would add that if, you know, with this language in your motion, should, should you decide that you want to proceed with this.
Then council needs to know.
You could include a recommendation to council to set that number at five, to start with, just, just to kind of, because I think that's the direction I'm getting from you guys, that's where you're looking at, is the preference of five at this time.
Mario, what would you consider, what would you consider to be best, best practice for this type of issue?
The language as proposed, while I understand some trepidations, it does allow for council flexibility with that. And it's a matter of how you consider that for whether you'd want that kind of flexibility in the hands of the council. I would agree with Drew, that you can also make a recommendation, that it'd be a five-member body. A five-member body is usually the most dynamic, simply because it's not, doesn't take that many people to get a quorum, but at least you have three people that need to vote in the affirmative to grant something. So, you know, it's, it's not just two people doing it.
Jack, please.
What we're doing tonight is setting the verbiage in zoning ordinance 9.5.4.4B, giving council, recommending to council that they do five to seven, giving them the authority to give us the number of ZBA. We're not, if we say we want it at five, that's not what's gonna happen. We recommend to village council, they can deny that, turn it down, send it back here and say, try again.
Yeah.
If we set five to seven, should they grow? Should we do anything? The council will set the number of ZBA members.
Ms. Leslie?
I would like to just clarify for myself, that I think that the number five, not only is it more robust in terms of the review of any kind of consideration, but I think if we recommend five, we are saying we believe this community can provide a ZBA of five people, and I think that's an important message as well.
Thank you.
I agree with Leslie.
Maureen?
That never happens.
Adam? Mr. Deeg?
I think we got so five.
Ms. Leslie, anything else?
No.
Mo?
No.
Rose?
Nope. I, as I stated, I think of number five with two alternates would be my preference, only because, how did we get to the point of six this last time around? Is it because of, we were constantly doing it? Because we, I go back and look at other things out there, and you start counting, and it's anywhere from five to seven members. So, I think if we stick with just a flat five.
Are alternates allowed?
I'm sorry?
Are alternates allowed?
Yes.
Okay. Up to two?
Yes.
Jack?
In the case of the council, it can't vote, it's not the case of absence.
No, no. The alternate is.
So, he has to, so he accuses himself.
Yeah, either he accuses himself, or more, more actually, usually what happens is, is if someone can't attend.
Joe, right?
It's usually in a manner of absence.
Joe.
If someone can't attend, and that someone else is able to meet, get to the meeting.
I'm happy to have your comments, but if you're gonna make comments, I need you to step to the podium, because this is all part of public record, and I need to be able to record your comments, so if you'd be so kind.
I just told Gary I could get you to do something.
I, I appreciate that a lot, and I welcome your comments. Your comments are more than welcome.
At the podium.
All right. Commissioners, I would, if you are ready, I would entertain a motion for consideration.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the village council the following changes to section 9.5.4.4B of the zoning ordinance. Number one, set the Village of Oxford ZBA zoning board of appeals membership at five members. Number two, change from, appointed members may be removed for cause by the village council only after consideration of written charges. Two, appointed members may be removed for cause by the village council only after consideration of written charges of misconduct relevant to the responsibilities of the zoning boards of appeal. In event that the member is removed, the village council, they must be replaced with another appointed member prior to the ZBA taking action on any request of determination. End of motion.
Second.
Mr. Sec.
Can I physically read that, Jack?
Yeah. Just made that up. I spit my gum, you seen the top of his head? Definitely wasn't from there.
No. No, Jack's good. He always writes them out.
Well, actually, I took the planner's recommendation from the do.
Mm-hmm.
Steal the homework, brother.
All right. Any, any discussion, I have a motion on the table.
Mo, let's read that.
All right.
Mo needs a second here. Mo read it.
We have seconds.
You happy with that, Mo?
I'm just pondering that. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna get to voting again in a couple weeks, I'm good.
All right. So, I have a motion on the table, and I believe, did I get a second on that?
Yes.
All right. So, I have a motion on the table and a second. I will then ask for a roll call vote on that, please, Mr. Secretary.
Hyatt?
Hi.
Helma?
Uh-huh.
Bama?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Douglas?
Aye.
Deeg?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
All right, good. That motion carries. That recommendation will be put into writing and sent to the commission for their consideration. All right. That item being finished, let's move on to consideration of a recommendation of a minor adjustment to the planning commission bylaws. And Mario, if, once again, if you'll take over and give us an introduction to that, I'd be much obliged.
Basically, what we're looking at is, the current bylaws, which govern how you operate in your, your standards, don't currently reflect how you've been operating. And that's simply because, back when those changes were proposed, they were considered, and then they were enacted upon, but it's just that the language itself wasn't updated to reflect those desired changes. So, for example, the amendment procedure would reflect, trying to get here.
I can, I can take this one.
Actually, Drew.
Drew, actually, you brought this to our attention, so if you'd be kind enough to take over, perhaps you can.
I was talking to Jack, it came up. Yeah. This came up when we were looking at the zoning board of appeals bylaws, which will need to be amended along with this, and so I was looking at the planning commission ones, and the, the copy that I can find that is most recent for the planning commission does not represent the current membership structure. And as I was going through, there just, there were some other things that I highlighted in the copy that I gave you all. Your bylaws are, you recommended them to council to approve for you all. So, really, just, the, the membership composition, just the language of it, would need to change to coincide with the ordinance amendment from 2014. Some of the restriction things also need changed, literally just directly from the ordinance amendments from 2014. All of the, the highlighted changes that I've put in there are references from it, or slight things from, from how this board is operated, at least as I've seen fit, or not seen fit, but seen as operated. So, under Article 5, Section 1, meetings, regular meetings, planning commission shall hold, we hold two meetings per month instead of one, is in the bylaws. The annual meeting, it was, it used to be set in October, I think November makes more sense, because that's when the appointments are. No? Rose?
No. I disagree with that. I think January should be, because council, since we've gone to November elections, they're gonna be, the first Tuesday of the month, they're going to be seated, and then they don't take effect until the second meeting, or the, yes, the first meeting, which is the second Tuesday. And it's not, it's not going to give them time to, you know, start their appointments and everything. So I think that the annual meeting is in January, that gives them time to get their feet wet and find out who's, who all is going to be where. Either December or January, I just.
Okay. No, that's.
I think January would be, same with the ZBA, I think January should be our annual meeting, because of the fact.
You want the annual meetings a month after the appointments would be made, just so everybody.
That's just, that's just my recommend, that's just my recommendation.
Fire hose.
So, yeah, so, and, and part of this whole thing is, this is why I wanted to make sure that you all had the chance to look at just the things that I noticed, and make sure that if there was anything else going through these bylaws, that as the sitting planning commission, you thought maybe didn't make sense, or something like that, that you might want to look at. So, just wanted to bring it to your attention, and essentially, I would, the idea here would be a motion to, recommend the changes as proposed, or any, any changes that you want to make from what I had put forth, and then I can move those forward.
Jack?
You have a master list that you gave us, some of the highlighting and changes on there. If you make Rose's change to January versus November, I think you will have the master copy that we would recommend the village council to adopt.
Okay.
Do that.
I just want to, Mario, if you'd be kind enough to guide me in regard to the legality of this, we are able to make this recommendation again to the council without holding a public hearing in this regard.
That's correct, because the council has the authority to govern your bylaws by resolution.
Okay, so.
So the council will be simply considering as a motion, and they would adopt the changes by resolution.
So, once again, we're making a recommendation to the council to take action in regards to our bylaws.
That's correct.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Commissioners? Ms. Pilek?
No comment.
Maureen?
I just read these, and we've, we seem very concerned about kicking people out for malfeasance, but that's it, that's my concern.
We seem very concerned about what?
Malfeasance, it's in.
Oh, malfeasance, I hate that malfeasance. We got to get that malfeasance out of here. Ms. Rose?
I have no more other than.
M-A-L-F-E-A-S-C-E, malfeasance. Mr. Johnson? No comments. Mr. D?
No, sir.
All right, no comments from the chair. I would entertain a motion to make this into consideration.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the Oxford Village Council the proposed planning commission bylaws to reflect the 2013 amendment, amendment in the code of ordinances as presented.
Is that it? Okay. Fellow commissioners, I have a motion on the table and support offered. Once again, Mr. Secretary, I'd like to do a roll call vote on this.
Alma?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Douglas?
Aye.
Dee?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pilek?
Hi.
Motion carries. Good, motion carries, thank you very much. That'll, a little bit of housekeeping will clean things up a bit, take away any ambiguity. I hate ambiguity as almost as much as we hate malfeasance. All right, moving on to item C, discussion regarding.
But can you spell it without looking?
I did, I spelled it already.
Ambiguity?
A-M-B-I-G-U-I-T-Y, ambiguity.
Just checking.
Listen, I was a spelling bee champion in high school. All right, thank you very much. Discussion regarding the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, redevelopment-ready community certification. As you all remember, this is an item that has been our package for a while, Drew brought this to our attention, as something that we thought we might like to participate in. There's been some discussion amongst this commission already in regards to this, concerns maybe that we had already taken steps in this regard, regarding our one-step process through the Oakland County group that has been sponsoring that, but I would open this back up to further discussion.
I, I just want to introduce this a little bit, the continuing conversation. I did have the opportunity to go to the redevelopment-ready communities best practices training that they held in Lansing. It's a, it's an all-day deal, and it's, so there are two sessions, the one, two, three, and three, four, five. Really awesome experience to get to see how these best practices have been implemented by other communities, and again, we talked about this at the previous meeting, that perhaps the certification as a whole is not the direction that we want to go, because there are a lot of steps involved, and we're a small community with limited resources. But what I got most out of these training opportunities, and I would encourage you all to go as well, they are free, but you have to free up a whole day to get there, so I understand that's a challenge. But, is to look at the, the best practices as they publish them, and going through the, the, the self-evaluation process, to identify specific areas that we could target moving forward as projects that we'd like to look at. As Chris had mentioned, and you all talked about as well, many of the best practices we're already doing, and, you know, that, that's, it's worth noting and recognizing, that's part of the self-evaluation process. But there are, you know, there are just always other components that we can look at, so that was, I, I believe the direction that made sense. But again, if, if going for the full certification is something you're all interested in, there are significant grant opportunities and resource opportunities that come from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for doing so. They help, they, they put in extra effort, well, extra effort might not be the best word, but there's extra attention paid to the development properties that you may have available, marketing them, and things like that. So, that's just kind of what I had for you.
All right, commissioners, comments? Discussion? Questions? I'm sorry, Rose, thank you.
Don't we hit on a lot of this through our?
One stop.
One-stop-ready already?
I believe that we have, we have raised that question, and I believe the consensus among the commission, if I recall correctly, is that we probably do.
Yeah, I was just reading this, and I remember going to a couple of the one-stop-ready programs, and a lot of this stuff has been discussed there.
Ms. Leslie?
I am coming into this a little bit, you know, without the benefit of past discussions, so I do have a couple of questions, one being, how does the DDA fit into this, and, because I see in Chris's comments, that in various places, he talks about the DDAs, has some shared maybe interest in this. Have there been joint meetings between the planning commission and the DDA to discuss this in more detail?
This specific project, or concept?
These kinds of concepts, or this, this particular project approach?
I haven't been here super long, so I can't say definitively, but for specific projects, I would imagine so, whether it be a master planning process, or the parks and, you know, the different plans of the village, yes. You all may know better than I do.
If I could, maybe I should clarify. In other words, some of the approach used here may depend upon the DDA and their contributions. Where do they stand with us?
I don't think that, I know.
I'll get you, I'll get you in one second, Mario, I promise.
I think that President Bizzardi has sent out to planning commission, ZBAs, DDAs, and council, to everybody to attend these, but I don't think they have actively participated in.
President, do you care to comment on this?
One-stop-ready.
Come on.
Come on.
You might not like my power. Oxford was initially one of the, first to join the one-stop-ready program, and to date, there's been very few council members, planning commission members, DDA members, CBA members, who've attended those. I feel it's a shame, because they were very educational. There is a whole series of them, and it's not pick and choose, you should go through the whole class schedule in order to understand how one-stop-ready works. So I'm not sure that, I'm sure that when Drew went to that, they're very enlightening, you get all inspired, you get, I think Rose has been to a couple, Gary, you might have been to one. I think that's about it. And you come back all charged up and ready to do, but if nobody else understands the program, and, and you don't put forth the effort to be educated on it, then it stalls in the water, because not enough people really understand how the program works. That goes for one-stop, and I think it goes for this. Both are excellent programs, but you have to take the time to go to learn about it, and be educated, and understand it's different than just reading about it in here. So, while I think this is a great idea, if the commitment is not going to be there by board members, and it's not just you, if the commitment is not going to be there by people, then, I don't know what to say.
I understand.
Drew can speak to it. I did not go with the one-day training, it involves a whole day for one, two, and three, and then I think the following year, you do four, five, and six.
They, they have multiple times set the year, so I'll, four, five, and six will be in the beginning of September.
September.
So, I think it's a great program, but you have to have the energy and the interest in order to advance through it.
Well, and it's, it's, it is a lot more than just the trainings, it is, it's putting together all of these different things, whether it be, you know, an economic development strategy, like a formal economic development strategy, creating different guides to development through different processes, creating a capital improvements plan. I mean, that, those are really the key components of becoming a redevelopment-ready certified community, is having all of these pieces in place, that say to developers, or people interested in investing in your community, that they've got all their ducks in a row for us to be able to step in, hit the ground running, and get a return on our investment. And again, it's, a lot of these little things through, there, there's a lot of overlap with the one-stop-ready. The big difference is that this program is more intense, and it offers much more significant incentives for being a part of it. But, again, that, that commitment makes a big difference, as Sue talks about. Again, in our, in our kind of area, I really think that taking individual pieces of these, what are the, you know, as you look through the checklist of things to do, you know, what are the ones, as you look at your community and say, you know what, I think that's something we should really look at, that, that should be a priority for making us more development-friendly, or a stronger community in general from a planning perspective. That's, that's, you know, as Chris and I talked about this, and I've talked about this with Sue, and some of you as well, I think that's really the strength of it, is not necessarily just fighting for these incentives, but how do you just improve your processes, it's that way.
Thank you, Drew.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that ordinance review is something that the planning commission should address. Our ordinances do need to be reviewed, it's been years for some of them, even if you do nothing but just review it and say it's still fine. We don't have that here. Capital improvement, I don't believe that we have planned, and if we do, it's nothing kind of create, nothing that anybody studied, made recommendations on. I think that that's needed. Our building department, while it's much improved, still has a long ways to go in some sections, and I think that that needs attention too. So, this is all part of that program.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a second, Rose. Mario, please.
Can I just say that the DDA has back yet this information of.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mario?
Just a little background as to, from what I know of the reasons this program was created, you know, the, the state has to deal with all the municipalities located within its boundaries, and I can't even remember how many hundreds there are, with townships and cities and villages. And so, there are certain communities where they, you know, if you came in and asked them, I'd like to build a house, they wouldn't be able to find you, you know, exactly what codes they're supposed to follow, and where, and what, and how big, even how high the house should be, or if they even have a limit. So, they, so this intent is to make sure that every community, when someone walks in the door, you're doing them the highest and best service by saying, yes, here's our development standards, here's our master plan, this is what it's planned for, this is what it's zoned for, we have professionals, or else we have someone that's trained, that can, can speak to you, and yes, we have a website, and you can download it and apply, and these are our fees. So, that's the, the crux of the one-stop-ready process. Fortunately, Oakland County established their own program a while ago, like in the 90s, because it was, yeah, like when I was out of school, it was getting started. Because even at that point, those kind of communities, they would have, you know, you go to, you go to Cocon County, you have to go to this building, then that building, then this building, then that building, and so they didn't have that put together. So, the benefit is, and as, as you've, as both Drew and the President has mentioned, you have majority of these in place already, you've addressed some of those. So that's, that's why, based on what they propose, utilizing, and other communities have done this, utilizing their checklist, and going through your list of ordinances, and checking, do we address this, that, the other thing? And that's why, that's why the village is in a very good position. There are some points that, that we haven't addressed, like a capital improvements plan, so it'd be good to do that. And then whether, and so using that as a guide for seeing what kind of, not a whole, but other areas that we haven't addressed yet, that's, it's an easy way to start, and it's, it's actually very beneficial. The benefit of that, too, is that if you do change at one point in time, you go through the registration process, you'll, in theory, you would go through it quickly, because you'd address all of them at that point in time. And then, honestly, when this first came out, too, I was trying to find out, all right, what exactly grants are tied to this? They, the office doesn't specifically say. I mean, it's, it's, the MEDC does do a lot, but they, they, and they have a lot, every now and then, when I'm reading development news, someone's getting a lot of money from MEDC. However, the criteria for that that's involved, and whether that community, how that community receives it, it's still kind of an amorphous situation. I will say that eventually, they are going to get more rigid with that, and they're going to say, the only communities that could receive grants will be those that are redevelopment-ready certified, but that's not the case at this point in time. The recommendation of looking through, you know, going through that checklist, being able to tick things off, looking at where we're missing, or where the areas we could address it, that might be the way to go. And then, when it comes to the DDA, and how they interact with this kind of process, they, they're a little bit more of a, a subject, they're a subject of these our ordinances and policies, because whenever someone wants to come into the community and develop some, and open up a business or build a building in the downtown, these are the type of ordinances and policies that they do. In theory, the DDA would be the one that's holding their hand as they go through this process. So the good thing is, by simplifying the process and being a very open, open process, they, in theory, they would go through it very quickly. And I do know the state has other programs that the DDA, that they would like DDAs to go through, or downtowns and that. But, you know, that's where it is right now, it's a good, it's a good guidebook, and it's something, you know, something I could consider in the future.
Thank you, Mario. Jack, please.
I agree with Sue. Everybody has to be on board with one-stop-ready, but he has to be on board with the redevelopment-ready communities. However, I don't know the scope in the Village of Oxford for like brownfield redevelopment acts, we don't have a lot of those, we don't have any of them. But, I would possibly suggest to the village council that they have the, Drew be the redevelopment-ready communities expert, that takes it through the engagement process, the evaluation, and up to the certification process. And I, I know there's a lot of money out there, because we're trying to go after some of it, the MSF, the Michigan Strategic Fund, the Community Revitalization Program, CDBG, that's, that's been around for a while, we give our money to FISH every year, but there's so much money out there that can be captured through MEDC, that you need somebody in the community that's aware of all this, and in order to capitalize on the awareness and the garnering of those grants, you need to have a liaison, whether it's Drew, or Joe, or Glenn, or someone that takes the first step and goes through the engagement and the evaluation process. You might find that all of your processes, or one, may need to change, and then all of your processes are ready for certification, and that would entitle you to apply for matching grants in a lot of these instances, if you so elect to go after them. But, a liaison is the first step, and if you're going to the classes and learning from it, you might suggest changes in, in the village offices, you may bring comments to village council, planning commission, zoning board of appeals, that may help it be a more redevelopment-ready community. So, I would propose that someone can ask the council if they would approve having a liaison to the redevelopment-ready communities, to ascertain any funds that are available.
Ms. Leslie?
Following up on that, I was wondering in my mind, too, what, what responsibility, if we were to proceed, would fall upon staff, and what, what part of the responsibility for the self-study would fall upon the commission members themselves? Do you have a way to clarify that?
Well, actually, one of the points I was going to bring up, that other. Well, actually, one of the points I was going to bring up that other communities have now faced, and I haven't got a good answer from MEDC on this.
Yeah, total.
The MEDC has their contact person for each community is tied to that, the, the training that someone goes through is tied to that person. So, if that person leaves the community, the community has to start all over again. So, that's one thing that I've been asking them consistently, and they do not give me an answer as to, you know, it's not that Drew's going anywhere at any time soon, but if, but if you only have one person in your community, yeah, Drew can be here and he can walk us entirely through, like, for example, that's a question I have for them. You go through the process with one person, you get your certification, and then if that person happens to leave, do you lose your certification? They, they don't have an answer for that. Because I've been on other communities where someone started, they went through the two classes, and then they wanted to fill out their next, and then got to the memo of understanding, and then that manager retired, the village manager retired, and then they're like, oh, well, you're going to have to start all over again. So, it's a crimp, eventually, they're going to come to the realization that community, that people leave and, and, you know, people retire.
Come and go.
Life happens. So, but that doesn't necessar, but, so I'm sure at some point they'll address it, and they'll, they'll have a way that it retains with the community. What their, their concern
No problem.
Is, is a, a loss of the knowledge. And I, and I respect that, but they, they still haven't figured it out yet.
Jack, please. You had your hand up first.
The thing you don't lose, though, are the improved processes.
Right.
The thing you don't lose is the streamlining. The thing you don't lose is the knowledge amongst the rest of the people that have learned about how to do a block grant, or how to do a CFF, or working with the MEDC. You may be the liaison, you may be certified and trained, you leave, we still have the benefit of the process improvement while we get somebody else trained. While MEDC doesn't state that if you lose your liaison and you are certified, you lose your certification. They haven't stated that yet. We, we still have benefits that we don't lose.
Right, there definitely, definitely is a
Drew, please.
A couple of thoughts. I wanted to address what Leslie was kind of getting at. I feel like you were asking more from, from the commission standpoint, what is your involvement in some of these processes? Because you're right, some of these are more administrative functions, you know, developing flow charts for, for going through our permitting process. Yeah, that's not something that planning commission would look at. So, really, planning commission and DDA are, you're involved in the decision-making processes on, like, plans and the, the larger picture items, where staff, whether it be Mario, myself, Joe, Terry, our new clerk, would handle a lot of the, you know, on-the-ground functions, but you all would be responsible for making decisions that inform how these things go. So, using the capital improvements plan as an example, you all would be involved in determining the priorities, helping to establish, you know, based on the, the funds that could theoretically be available, how they would be, projects would be structured through a capital improvements plan. You know, those policy decisions are a lot of what the planning commission would be involved with, where staff would be involved with carrying out and facilitating the development of those policy decisions, and then carrying them out afterwards.
Anything else, Rose, please?
Is there a cost behind this, you know, to send, to have you or a planning commission member go, or anything like that?
No, the trainings are free. But, again, getting there and spending all day there, there is a cost associated with that.
Versus one-stop, there is a fee, is there not?
I'm not 100% sure, to be honest with you. They have a lot of free trainings. I know they have a Brownfield education, or training for, for the Oakland County Brownfield is on September 7th, that's Friday. I believe that's free.
Okay, because I seem to recall a $25 fee or something, or was that just?
Oh, CBA training?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one-stop, sorry.
Okay.
Anything else, commissioners? Laurie, please, or Leslie, please, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, I guess I'm wondering about whether it makes some sense to have additional opportunities for perhaps representatives from the DDA to join us in a discussion about this, so that we have more than one body looking at this with your recommendations? Is there a way to either, is there a way to bring someone from the program here to do a presentation that we can, you know, jointly, you know, have a joint meeting of some kind? Could you make a presentation that has more detail in it, or is easier for people to relate to maybe than the package? And then, maybe that would give us an opportunity to, to take this, you know, to the next step a little more?
Yes, too. I'm not 100% sure if we can get someone here. I think so, but I'd have to look into that. I know I've met our representative who covers our region, so we can have a conversation with that person. After completing four, five, and six, I will have access to all of the PowerPoint slides. They trick you with that. They don't give you them all until you complete the whole thing. But, once I have them, then I'd be, I will definitely share them with all of you. I can, I'd be happy to present some of them to you, but to be honest, I mean, it's, that's 16 hours' worth of material, and I don't want to keep you here all night. But, yeah, we can definitely do that. Incorporating the DDA, I think, would, I mean, if we're pursuing, if we're looking at pursuing the whole certification, there are components that they would have to be involved with. Glenn and I, the Glenn, the DDA director, we've had conversations about this. He's a big proponent of pursuing this. I don't know that it's ever been brought up directly to the DDA board, but at the same time, they're looking at some of the components of it. You know, the, the portions of the best practices that relate to downtown, whether it be, you know, a strategic plan for that organization, having a master downtown plan, things like that, they are looking at, but not necessarily in reference to this, this program. But, in terms of the overlap, I think it would come from looking at specific things and saying, hey, you know, we're looking at the certification, and one of the areas that maybe you've identified, or a section you're not comfortable doing the self-evaluation on because it's about downtown, you can recommend it to them. And I also work for the DDA one day a week, so I can make sure that we can get that information over to them. That is one of the nice things that we've had going on lately, is that I, because I work for both sides, I can communicate between planning commission, village council, and the DDA. So, it would come down to individual things that you, as a board, may recommend to them. But, we can all, I mean, we should work on setting up the, the larger trainings. But, as Sue mentioned, and it's a lot to take in, and so, getting everyone to, you know, I wouldn't expect all nine members of the DDA and all seven members of the planning commission to go to 16 hours' worth of training. Well, I'd love, and I think that you all, being volunteers and doing this, having this kind of work, would like to be able to see all that and experience it. It's, I realize it's not always possible. The other thing that we can do is share some of the educational opportunities a little bit more frequently. Oakland County has them. The MEDCs for this are a little more frequent. They haven't announced the 2019 dates yet, but we can share that kind of stuff as well. But...
And, we, McKenna has, has given presentations to communities on redevelopment-ready, more as an introductory item, but it's definitely something we can probably work with Drew on and, and just introduce it and go over it. And with regards to the DDA's role in it, you know, since the DDA can, can be used as a, as a marketing arm for, for the community and helping, sometimes I know that property owners and business owners reach out to the DDA first for that, that helping hand. And so, the good thing is the redevelopment-ready process streamlines everything, and so, it could be something that if the DDA is aware of, and if they're know about it, it can make their job a little easier. Because it could say, yeah, I know exactly, like, someone says, I want to do this addition to my building, what kind of assistance I can have. They can do that sort of thing. So, it's something where, working in concert, the DDA would benefit by the streamlining of the, the process that the redevelopment-ready provides, and that institutional knowledge that Jack was talking about, that does in the end stick with the community, in that you have the new processes. So, that's one, they would be more of a, the DDA would be that entity that's out there implementing the, the processes behind redevelopment. So, that's one way to look at it.
Thank you, Mario. Okay, chair comments. I believe that under my tenure here, I've allowed this commission to languish a little bit, and we have stayed a responsive body without a lot of proactivity. And I think that's, that's really unfortunate. It's, it's a lack of leadership on my part, and I apologize to my commission members over that, because I really haven't taken the bull by the horns and worked harder to push this organization forward, or forward in a more aggressive and at least proactive way. I think that we have an exceptional opportunity right now. I sense a great deal of momentum, given what's come together here. We have a full commission, we have exceptional administrative support all the way around in every regard, and I think that we have an exceptional opportunity right now to really start making some changes to how we do business. And I, for one, would like to see this body become a little bit more proactive. And I have to say that even learning that there is a potential for money on the table that we're not taking advantage of is, you know, could benefit us greatly. I'd love to see the, the streets in the village repaved, something as simple as that. And if we could, if we could get our hands on some funds through a grant or something like that, to be able to do things like that, I have repeatedly asked the village to please repave the streets, and I don't think it'll ever happen. Unless we do something, I don't think it's ever going to happen, because I don't think money, that kind of money's ever going to be available. You know, so I certainly pledge myself to being a little bit more proactive. I hope that you all will join me in that, and I certainly welcome any recommendations and any suggestions that you have in that regard. And I think that going forward, we should probably try to be a little bit more proactive in taking on some of these things. You know, whether or not we make a full commitment to the suggestion here that we look at the Michigan Economic Development Group, or the one-stop group offered by Oakland County, I think that there's a lot that we can do to, to do what we do better, and to do it more assertively, and to make some positive change in this village, I think that will benefit us all. And so, that said, going forward, you know, I, I don't know if we want to take any action tonight on this discussion. I don't know if it requires a motion, per se. I'll leave it up to you guys as to whether or not you want to make any comments about that, but I open that up.
I think as long as Drew has the support of village council, and his boss, and everybody else, he keeps driving forward and bringing those learnings to, to the community. I don't think that the planning commissioners here are going to take a day off and go to Lansing, and it's how many days, Drew?
Two.
For the total course?
Two. Two eight-hour days.
Yep.
I don't know if they'll have trainings on the east side, or, yeah, on the east side of the state. By the time that I had seen the schedule for 2018, they were either in Grand Rapids or Lansing. I'd like to imagine that they'll have trainings on the, on our side of the state in 2019. So, I will keep you all abreast of that.
As well as one-stop?
Yes, absolutely.
Because we don't get notification on one-stop unless Sue sends out an email, however she gets it. Which she's been good at.
I don't know if I get those emails, which maybe I should, but I'll work on that as well, making sure that I'm, I'm being up to date on all of the training opportunities through Oakland County.
I mean, maybe, maybe somebody would attend with you if they're knowing that
I don't think so.
When, when things are ahead of time.
Absolutely.
Ms. Leslie?
Let me see if I can remember what I was thinking a second ago. I guess what I'm wondering is, it sounds like there are some things that you, you already have mentioned a couple times that are specific concerns you have. For example, capital improvements plan is lacking, you know, others share that feeling. And there are other things that the self-study may, you know, elucidate a little bit more that we don't really know yet. Do you have, with limited resources that we have available and understanding and where we are right now, do you have recommendations about proceeding that you could share with us that are more specific?
The, the one recommendation I, and I included this in the memo as well, and we've talked about it multiple times, is looking at a capital improvements plan. I think that is, from our perspective, something administratively that the lack of it has, has been kind of an issue. I know during village council, planning, or budget discussions, there was a lot of conversation about doing roads and making sure that we had funding available to do those things. And so, having a concrete capital improvements plan in place that you can follow would help in making sure that, that, you know, these, these roads will be taken care of, or these water mains, or these sewer lines, or village hall, or, you know, different capital assets of the village are being addressed on some sort of schedule. And while, you know, they, they are, they will change based on, you know, available funding on a year-to-year basis, at least it gives you a framework for that. So, that is one recommendation that, you know, I would have for you all to look more into the concept of doing. I can definitely get you all some examples of ones that other communities have done. I know, Mario, you've worked with capital improvement plans. It's something that McKenna does do. They, they would be able to help us with if, you know, if it got to the point that we really did want to move forward with that, it would probably be something that we would get some quotes for assistance with it. You know, our, the village engineers, NOAC and FROSE, or row engineering, different, we would need some consulting help with getting some components of it, but I think the bulk of the work can be done administratively and, you know, in terms of policy decisions through you all. If, again, if we get to that point, it would be something that, it would be recommended by you all to counsel to request, you know, some, some funds to move forward with that, and it would be a process from there. But, that, that would be the one. But, again, you know, you all, you all are the residents here, you all are the representatives of your community, so I don't, you know, well, that may be a recommendation from us. You know, the, as you look through these different plans and different things within the redevelopment-ready communities' best practices, there may be something else that speaks to you more, maybe that's a little bit low, more low-hanging fruit, or, you know, something that, you know, really speaks to you. And it, you know, those are, those are concepts that could be brought to planning commission to consider as well. So, I don't, I don't want it to just be the recommendation that I think this is the one thing we should do, but I would say that that's one issue we've definitely noticed that could be addressed. And is, I did include it's, in the zoning enabling act does recommend that, that task for planning commissions. It is a statutory duty of planning commissions to do. But, you know, so, again, I think that, that's part of why, where that recommendation comes from.
Thank you, Drew. All right, then, I, I would like to keep this issue on the table, so to speak. I'm going to ask each, each of you to please keep your thinking caps on. Please give this some considered thought. As we go forward, let's discuss this further. Ultimately, in the near term, I would like to see recommendations brought forth for the direction that we would like to go in as a body. Mario, please feel free to bring suggestions and recommendations for, you know, even like Drew says, I love the, the phrase, low-hanging fruit. There are things here that we can start discussing. And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have, we've, I've allowed this group just be too reactionary. We get an agenda, we deal with the things on the agenda, and then we go home. And then we come back and we do it again. And in the meantime, we're not really making any progress other than just dealing with things as they come to us. I would like, I would like us to be much more proactive in addressing some of the things that are outstanding, because unless we take action, I think that things are not going to happen. Any other comments?
Just real quick.
Yes, please, Adam.
I think the structure is very important. These, you know, this presents very identifiable goals. I think goals that we currently do not have in front of us.
I agree.
If we don't have anything that we're working towards, we're never going to get anywhere. These provide, these criterias, even though they're structured, structure's good, sometimes bad, but allows us to work towards something rather than not.
Right.
And it provides us clear expectations on what we're supposed to be doing, what we're supposed to be working towards, something that might not be as visible as we'd like. So, I'm, I'm definitely for the structure for defining expectations for the groups, defining expectations for deliver- defining expectations for deliverables and our goals, and so I encourage you to keep pursuing this.
Thank you, Adam. All right, commissioners, any further discussion regarding MEDC? All right, thank you all very much, I appreciate your, your contributions. Moving on to item nine, which is new business. Mr. Secretary, do we have any new business for this evening?
Uh...
I don't, I don't see anything here.
No, I, nope.
Mario, do you have anything to address under new business?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you. I would then open up the, the floor to any public comment, and this is agenda and non- I gotta ask, I gotta ask. I can't just, I can't just make that assumption, it would be, it would not, it would not look good. So I opened the floor up then to public comment, agenda and non-agenda items, if there are any. I'd be happy to hear that now. I'll take that cricket, says there is no public comment. Opening it up then to consultant and administrative comments, anything in addition to what we've already covered?
Only that Chris Corey, I believe, will be able to attend one additional planning commission meeting, and then he will be transitioning to the west side of the state. But I enjoyed tonight's discussion and look forward to presenting you with some more proactive ideas as we move forward.
Good, thank you, Mario. Drew?
The only real notable thing I can think of is, a few years back, there was a condominium development approved over, off of Burdick, with Ashley Way, and they're village-rich condos. Those condominiums were not fully completed at the time, the economic downturn wasn't long after they had started building, so I think they got like halfway done. So they've submitted a site plan that we have, we're working with them to make sure that they can legally do it. There are some issues potentially with the Michigan condo act, some different things, so, but that is a project that will likely be coming before you all. We just have to get all the details figured out with them, and so that's something to look forward to. Haven't heard anything else from Mr. Jokai regarding the proposed, proposed development on 21 Dennison. So, but if anything else comes up with that, I'll be sure to let you all know. Obviously, there were a lot of approvals that would need to be gained before he could move forward with that.
Any update on the, East Burdick?
Oh, with, with Mr. Whackel? No, you know what, I haven't, we haven't heard anything from him. I'm not 100% sure what the deal is. He, he had indicated, we talked probably about a month, eh, it might have been two months ago now, and his goal is to have the parking lot done in November. There are strict deadlines on the, the PUD agreement. We, you know, I'll double-check with him this week and just see how he's doing, but as far as I can tell, he, I don't know that he has all the demolition done that he needs to, so.
That's my concern, is we have deadlines for a reason. He has a deadline.
Okay. All right, thank you, Drew. All right, moving on to commissioner comments. I have a quick question first, Mario, and hopefully this is for you, in regards to the limited proposal, and perhaps maybe you had an opportunity to review some of this, but Mr. Tokaj was considering building a, a development over here of some condominiums, I think, or whatever, I'm not exactly what sure you'd call it. I've had an opportunity to speak to a number of the residents in my community about this. People, for some reason, seem to come to me to ask questions. And the question that came up first and foremost was the number of parking spaces. And I'm just wondering, have you had an opportunity to review his proposal in its limited sense? I really, he doesn't have a site plan and things like that, but.
With reverence to the renderings that we looked at-
Correct.
-just a cursory review-
Right.
-we did discuss with him parking issues and ways to address them. The one thing I would say is just, without real dimensions, you know, being able to verify dimensions and areas and the standards for the required spaces, it does appear that, that based on how a proposal of reconfiguration of the lot would work, if they had done in concert with the village, there's a potential for not, not only a minimum improvement to the, to the condition, but also even possibly an increase in the amount of parking spaces available. So, but obviously, parking would be a very fundamental issue with regards to the design and the density, and it would definitely have to function, so, at a minimum. So, beyond, but beyond that, I wouldn't want to say anymore, just because-
Sure, and I understand that, I don't, I'm not gonna hold your feet to the fire on that at all. Have you had a chance to speak with him in terms of perhaps what his plan is going forward?
Not, not recently, other than what we've spoken to at that time.
Okay, good, I appreciate that, thank you very much, okay. Any other commissioner comments that you want to address? Jack, then please go ahead and do your township.
I talked with Joe earlier today, we're doing a solicitation ordinance at the township board level, and our ordinance review subcommittee is doing, of the planning commission, is working on a food truck ordinance. So, while we capture solicitation, we're gathering the village data today, we're gonna incorporate it to make it like as much as possible, but in there, we are calling them transient merchants, and food trucks will be addressed in this transient merchant ordinance that we're preparing, along with the door-to-door salespeople, ice cream trucks, all those kind of things that come into our community and try to sell their wares, knocking on your door without impeding on the First Amendment. Other than that, a wood trail, a wood trailway is open, it's all cleaned up and done. We're trying to ascertain the easements on M24 for our water main that we're running down there. Other than that, we're just moving along.
Good, thank you very much. Ms. Rose, do you have ZBA update?
There have been no meetings. I look forward to having our annual meeting, so that we can get all of our members and ducks in a row.
It's November, right? No, October.
Well, right now, it's still November, but we need to address the ZBA bylaws and everything, and get them on the same page, like the planning-
Yes.
-having a January, you know, if we're gonna go, if council goes with our five members, then we need to solicitate additional members to be on the ZBA, both a member and alternates.
I will include the January in their bylaws that, we'll take that to council at the same time, so we'll just include the, the potential change, because we have to change the number of members, obviously, in the bylaws.
Now, council has to approve that anyways, right? So, why wouldn't we just go right to council, and, I mean, since there's no set meetings or anything coming up?
Yeah, no, it would just go straight to council, and then have it all taken care of at the same time, but I was talking about the January, having the annual meeting in January.
Yeah.
Make, make sure that gets in there.
Yeah, because we missed an annual meeting already, so we need to get on the right page.
Maybe they're bi-annual meeting. Maybe they're bi-annual meeting.
All right, then, I see that Chief Shoals is not in the, in the audience. Do we have any representative from DDA who cares to give us an update this evening?
They did just meet last night, too. Sue, you were there? Anything super memorable happen?
She's sick or had no truth, you weren't lucky.
All right, that looks like a negative to me. All right, then, I believe that completes our-
Any other?
Okay, yeah, sure, certainly. Any other commissioners? Ms. Leslie, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No additional comments.
All right, thank you. Ms. Maureen?
Welcome, Leslie.
Thank you.
Welcome, Leslie.
Yep.
And Mario.
And Mario.
Yep.
Weather's still good, drive careful.
All right, Jack, you're all good?
Yes.
Mr. Adam?
Good.
Gary D?
Good.
All right, I also want to second that. Mario, welcome aboard. We're very glad to have you, I think you're gonna be a terrific asset for us. I, I speak for the commission, and we're all very, very grateful to have you. And if we have to lose Chris, who we've enjoyed so much, I'm sure that you will be a terrific replacement. And as always, we wish Chris all the best, and we'll shake his hand and say goodbye next time he comes. Ms. Leslie? I believe already you're gonna be a great addition to this, this commission, I thank you very much for your dedication and your time devoted to your service of your community. All right, anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
I'm making motion to adjourn at 8:20 seconds.
All right, Mr. Secretary, I have a motion on the table with a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay? All right, good, we're adjourned, thank you very much.